Okay, sorry for our delay. We had a little bit longer than normal. Oh, we're missing Donna, sorry. All right, I would like to resume the August 12th, 2019 U46 Board of Education meeting. Welcome our student board member Hallie Furtick to the dais. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is Strategic Plan Report, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask members of Cabinet to come up to the front row. And the three key presenters who will be at the presenter's table will be Dr. Jeff King, Dr. Joshua Carpenter, and Ann Chan, who will give you some updates real quickly on our readiness to open schools, which is this Wednesday. For those of you in the audience on YouTube especially, don't forget, we want to see your children in school on Wednesday on time, and we can't wait to see them. The entire Cabinet will come up in case the Board has additional questions about activities over the summer. But with that, we'll start off with, if I remember correctly, Ann Chan, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will give a quick update on our staffing for the upcoming school year.
Great, good evening. I'm looking forward to opening my first opening of school with U46. Lots of excitement in our schools as well as our Human Resources Department. Our recruitment effort for this upcoming school year really started last fall, where we started connecting with our university partners, attended and hosted numerous career events, as well as conducted many interviews between. At the start of the week of July 22nd, we had 97 classroom teaching vacancies to fill. With the return of the administrators and the start of new ones, we have filled 49 since on that week. Plans are already in place to have an educator in every classroom on the first day of school. Last week, 230 new teachers attended our new teachers orientation at Elgin Center. I am pleased to share with you that at this report out, we have filled every elementary full-time Gen Ed position, so that's great. We are still actively recruiting for the remaining classrooms and non-classroom teaching positions, as well as paraeducator, noon hour supervisor, food service, and bus driver positions. I encourage any and all job seekers to go onto our website at www.u-46.org. Click on Careers or the little briefcase icon that's on the website, and it will take you to our listing of all the opportunities that are there for with us in U46.
So I'm pleased to be able to share that dating back to last June, we began working with our staff around professional learning, bringing our school improvement planning teams together at Elgin Community College to not only think about next, but to reflect on this past year's successes and goals achieved within our school improvement plan, but then also to think ahead to the 1920 school year and plan and develop, modify their school improvement plans. And that was professional learning that took place over two full days in June. We also had ongoing professional learning in content over the course of the summer. And we also had frequent professional learning communities coming together within many of our sites. And also, I'd like to highlight our new teacher orientation. As Ms. Chan mentioned, we have 230 teachers that we've hired. And onboarding those teachers is an important, critical component of what we do here in U46. So I want to thank all the parties who are involved with planning and executing. The new teacher orientation is not an easy effort, and a lot of hands go in to making sure that that's a successful week. The focus really for the new teacher orientation is on building professional relationships, planning and preparation, and really understanding what an effective, strong classroom environment looks like. New for this year is that we deliberately planned for our new staff to have an opportunity to be in their building and in their classroom at the beginning of the week and also at the end of the week. And while we also had broad topics that were covered on the first two days, days three and four were really differentiated opportunities for our new staff members. And that's something that we haven't had necessarily in the district. It was a lot of the same, but for our different job titles, we had a lot of different opportunities for them that they could choose to participate in. Give you a quick update, we started today with our district collaborative opportunities for our elementary. Secondary is tomorrow. The focus, and those opportunities were at Elgin Community College. The focus for our elementary was on our integrated curriculum, social studies, new social studies resources, multiple sessions to support math pedagogy and instruction, technology, interventions, MTSS, and social emotional learning. Tomorrow, we'll have our secondary teachers at Elgin Community College. And the focus will be, there'll be similar offerings such as technology, math tech book. We're also doing some training with the heart rate, the heart rate and polar monitors that you approved last year. And ongoing professional development in the content areas, also SEL and trauma-informed care. So we're really excited.
First, I'd like to thank all the men and women who work in food service, finance, business services, transportation, plan ops, and IS for all of their work this summer and getting school ready to start on Wednesday. All of them did a wonderful job, put a lot of work in this summer, and they have a lot to be proud of. Specifically in food service, I don't know if any of you have been by the facility this summer, but they planted a garden out on the empty two acres that are just adjacent to the building. So they've just started to harvest some of the vegetables which we'll use in our salad bars, which are expanding, we're going to 10 salad bar, or nine salad bars, excuse me, in the elementary schools. So we've been using a grant money to expand that program and buy the equipment. Also, they are expanding their breakfast for all. That will be in 21 elementary schools starting this fall. In finance, as you're aware, that's on the agenda tonight. They've been working hard to complete the budget. The auditors have been onsite, working onsite based expenditure reporting, which is a ton of work that the department has not had to do in past years, closing the end of the year, and as I mentioned, working on the audits. In business services, about 90% of the textbook adoptions are at the buildings. They moved almost 16,000 Chromebooks and computers this summer to their final destinations. And that group also coordinated the moving of equipment in and out of buildings that had major construction performed this summer. In transportation, they completed 283 routes. Drivers have picked the routes and have practiced their runs. We have a total of 301 drivers at this point. All buses were cleaned inside and out over the summer and received their safety inspections. In plan ops, as has been mentioned previously, we completed over $42 million worth of work in our buildings, which is probably equivalent to the work that was performed in the district after the last bond referendum in 2000, 2001. Also, they made huge improvements communicating to principals. They elevated custodial outcomes, and the number of complaints we've been receiving have decreased significantly. In the IS area, they assisted with the upgrading of the PD tracking system, the staffing program that is used by Human Resources. They increased their own PD by over 160%. And then worked to automate the electronic communication between the student system and Versatrans. As I mentioned, the distribution and setup of almost 16,000 pieces of equipment, and installed the new firewall that the Board approved late last spring. And then we also included a PowerPoint, I won't go through the PowerPoint, but there's several pictures and descriptions of the work that was performed at many of the buildings before and after.
And then to wrap it up, we actually have a video that our Communications Department put together, and before that starts, if you don't mind me sharing as you get it queued up, to echo this team's sentiments, I cannot thank enough the staff for all of their hard work across the district. People who stop you on the street in this role or any of our roles and say, boy, it must be nice to have your summer off. It's always a chuckle because we don't get our summers off. If you got your summer off this year, please raise your hand from the audience. And nobody gets the summer off. And that also includes our teachers. Our teachers and many others are engaged in professional learning throughout the school year, including the summer. And so for all the hard work, I hope we can give the team a round of applause.
That's great. Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions?
On the hires, the classroom, or not even just classrooms, but the hard-to-fill positions. I know we don't have them filled, and we will get them filled eventually. However, on the contract ones, I know we voted on that last time and we weren't here. Are we going to keep those positions up on our website so people can apply in November, December, just to try to get some of those filled?
Yes, those positions are labeled as district-wide position, and they remain open for anyone that wants to apply, and we do look at them on a very, very regular basis.
So they'll just stay open forever?
They remain open. Once annually, we refresh the title where it reflects the current school year.
Okay. Thank you. And one more thing, this isn't a question, it's just a comment. Usually during, usually most years, we do a lot of behind-the-scenes construction and boilers and roofs and stuff that people don't really see, but I think this year, the people are really going to walk into the schools with the floors we've done in the stadiums and the libraries. It's a lot of, yeah, a lot of things that people will notice the difference on, which is nice to see because we don't normally see that.
One question, one comment. I'll start with the question, do we still have registrations rolling in? Are these people still arriving?
Registrations will continue, for sure.
The schools are all done with their site base, but the doors are always open for families to arrive, and will continue to remain open for families to arrive.
And do you have any idea of how many kids are up to date on all their immunizations?
So I don't have, I don't have a number. In fact, I talked to Jeff about this today, but he did send me several bullet points. He said regarding students who have not, we don't have records of them receiving their immunizations. All notice has gone out to all our building principals. It was sent out today. An information was sent out today on the process that we utilize within the schools in order to support. We have a lot of, we have a lot of new administrators in our buildings. The nursing staff reviewed with the teaching staff the process that we utilize for students who may not, we may not have records of them in having immunizations. There's been support throughout the summer through our mobile clinics. There will be additional mobile clinics over the course of the next two weeks. So we will continue our mobile clinic process. Any child who's a project access student or new to the district automatically gets a thirty-day extension per our board policy. Nurses work to collaborate with families to minimize any students that are excluded. And then also Jeff has worked with communications and IS to gather data and reach out to those families who are not in compliance at this time and provide information so that they may receive their immunizations. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. I don't have a, I don't have a number right now, but I will certainly have that very soon.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for that information. I was going to ask that. So will we get a follow-up either by email after the start of school or at the next meeting? I'm not sure which was better.
Sure, yes. We'll make sure we get the numbers out to the board.
And I just want to say that I'm on top of it this year, that I got the physical. I scheduled that like in the beginning of June, and we got the form in. So I was, we're not going to be excluded this year.
Are there any new vaccine requirements this year? Do you know off the top of your head?
No, off the top of my head, no.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So I also want to thank everyone. I've been by a number of our schools that were having parking lots done. I know Streamer was in Bartlett most of the summer, and I know there's a lot of work on all over the place, and also I know everyone's been active as well. I was at the summer school graduation, so I know learning never stops. So thank you all very much.
So I do need to highlight, so we have two chillers that were damaged en route to U forty-six that delayed some of the projects a little bit at Canyon Woods and at TEFT, correct?
Correct.
So we saw the mobile units at Canyon Woods while the new unit was just installed, but there are a couple near misses this last summer because of things that just were thrown our way, like bad weather.
Yeah.
So again, the team really responded adeptly at every challenge that was thrown their way. And so when you see anybody, especially in maintenance and grounds, or the plant operations staff, or an HR, stop and tell them thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. All right, next, budget.
Our next is the presentation of the tentative budget for the school district, coming up to help present with, of course, Dr. Jeff King, as well as Dale Burnage, our director of financial operations. Robin Cornellson is out ill this evening, but I know she's with us in spirit, and she's probably watching from home. So I want to thank her for all the work that she put into this. As the budget is presented tonight, I want to just make note that evidence-based funding in the state of Illinois has really done a lot for our school district and for our students. And I want to point out just some of those things that we've been able to invest in. You saw a few minutes ago, some of the capital improvements, the learning commons in the high schools, the painting, the flooring, boilers and chillers, things, some things that are visible, some that are not. The last few years have allowed us to lower class sizes deliberately in grades kindergarten through grade two, to bring back middle school counselors, to increase administrative support for the larger elementary buildings, to increase instructional coaches, to offer one-to-one technology. For the last two years, we're now grades five through twelve, and one-to-one devices for students. That's twenty-six thousand total devices we brought in, plus a refresh of computers for staff. All of these things would not have been possible without evidence-based funding, and so I want to make sure that we recognize and thank our legislators for focusing their priority on education and equitable funding for schools. With that, Mr. Burnage.
All right, thank you. So our budget aligns with our district strategic plan under category number four, which is efficiency, excellence, and accountability. And that includes our priorities number seven, which is we will allocate resources efficiently, equitably, and transparently to accomplish our priorities. And priority number eight, which is we will clearly and effectively communicate our use of resources to the greater community. Three years ago, we improved our budget document to meet the requirements of the Meritorious Budget Award, or MBA. The MBA recognizes excellence in school budget presentation and helps promote the following: skills in developing and analyzing an effective budget, communication between departments to develop long-term and short-term strategies, clear budget guidelines, and building confidence in our community with a reader-friendly budget. So looking at our local revenue outlook, our property tax can grow at a rate of inflation as measured by the Consumer Price Index, plus any revenue from new construction. So for FY twenty twenty, our property tax revenue is projected to increase by three point one million. The twenty nineteen tax-year levy amount will be determined in December, and the total abatement will be nine point six million, the same as it was in FY twenty nineteen. The Consumer Price Index has increased two point one percent and one point nine percent for the last two years. This chart shows our total extended levies. You can see in the past few years, as we've abated some of the growth in our levy, our total levy hasn't increased a whole lot, one or two million a year. Looking forward, we're projecting about six million a year. This chart shows our historical CPI along with our two-year projection. So back in twenty fifteen, the CPI was very low at zero point seven percent. Then we had two years of two point one percent. Last year was one point nine percent, and so far this year, we're kind of trending at one point nine percent, and we're using two percent in our projections going forward. For our state revenue outlook, evidence-based funding is estimated to increase by nineteen million for a total of a hundred and ninety-seven million. As a reminder, the EBF consolidates and replaces five grant programs: the general state aid, special education personnel, special education funding for children requiring services, special education summer school, and the English learner education. So from our remaining state funds under the categorical section, we're anticipating four quarterly payments for a total of twenty-seven point three million. This chart shows our historical EBF funding, going back to twenty seventeen, which was the last year of the general state aid formula. The difference between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, about fifteen million of that comes from rolling some of those categoricals that I mentioned on the previous slide into the EBF formula. And then since then, we've received about an additional twenty million dollars per year. This next slide shows our categorical reimbursements, kind of grouped together. So under the special education, you can see that in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we had much higher amounts, and that's due to some of those categoricals getting rolled into the EBF funding formula. The remaining special education categoricals are for private placement and for the orphanage claim. Transportation is the other big area under categoricals, along with some of our special early childhood funding. Looking at our federal revenue outlook, our federal levels are very similar to last year at about thirty-eight point eight million. The largest programs under federal are the breakfast and lunch programs, the title programs. Under special education, we have the IDEA grant, and then Medicaid, and some other additional early childhood funds. Looking at the expenditure side, under salaries, we've added additional staffing positions for special education and English language learners, instructional coaches, interventionists, and elementary assistant principals in the larger schools. Our employee benefits includes a five percent increase for the health insurance. This chart shows our salaries and benefits for the last five years, and overall, salaries and benefits make up about seventy percent of our total budget, and we've been able to kind of hold the benefits a little bit lower as the employee contributions have increased over the past few years. Other major expenditures for the FY twenty twenty budget, we've set aside about thirty-eight million for the building capital projects, and that includes the pathways facility improvements. We've bought six point nine million for computer equipment, four point one million to replace forty-three buses. And new this year, we've added some additional funds that are being reserved for innovations proposed by our schools.
This was something that I handed out an additional attachment for the Board of Education. What I've done was asked all administrators during our all-admin meeting that if their school, their site, and their teachers have innovations that they would like to propose to be funded across the district, that we would consider those as long as they align to the board's five-year vision, which the board is very familiar with, aligned to the district's strategic plan, with additional credit being given for proposals that provide school choice opportunities, increase learning time, or provide professional learning day for staff. We also gave the criteria that it has to comply, of course, with contractual agreements or at least meet site exception criteria that are in the contract, but trying to give them flexibility as sites to come forward with proposals that might better meet the needs of their students.
Okay, this next slide highlights our debt management. It shows our outstanding debt and our debt service payments. Principal payments are the blue, and the interest is in the red. The orange line is our principal outstanding debt. Since our last major debt issue was in twenty fifteen, and some of that was to refinance our previous debt and to level out the payments, since that time, we've reduced our principal by a hundred and one million. So at the end of FY twenty, our outstanding principal will be around two hundred and eighteen million. This slide shows our revenue and expenditures for all funds, based on last year's budget, the tentative budget, which we had presented in May, and then our final budget, which we're presenting tonight. The major change for the revenue is under the evidence-based funding, with the state being able to add more funds to the budget for that area. We were able to increase our estimate from five million up to nineteen million, so about a fourteen million increase there. On the expenditure side, we really go back and review every expenditure line from the time we do the tentative to the final. When we do that first pass, the tentative budget, we only have our actuals up through the end of March, so we have to project the last three months of the year and then try and project the next year. So it's really helpful for us to go back in June when we have the full year in there, and then being able to project off of there helps us be more accurate. You'll notice under employee benefits, we were able to actually move that amount down, and part of that's due to the increased employee contributions with various groups moving to pay higher percentages. This slide is the revenue and expenditures by fund. So at the top, we have the operating funds, which is educational, operations and maintenance, and transportation funds. The total revenues, five hundred twenty-seven million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, nine forty-three, and our projected expenditures of five hundred twenty-six million, four ninety-five, four eighty-five, would be an estimated surplus of a little over one point four million. The middle section is the special revenue funds, which includes the TORT, IMRF, and Social Security Fund, working cash, and debt service. And then at the bottom section is the capital projects funds, which includes our fire prevention and safety fund and our developer fees. So the next steps in the budget process, we'll have the public hearing on the FY twenty twenty budget on September ninth. We'll receive the final fund balances for FY nineteen from our auditors on September twenty-third, and that's the same date that we'll ask for the final adoption of the budget. And if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Other questions? Kate?
I noticed when you were on slide nine, you said something about an orphanage claim, and I just was not familiar with that. What is that?
Yeah, that's one of the special ed claims that we do submit to the state where we get reimbursed for some of those costs.
Okay.
There's not, it's not a large amount, but it's a smaller amount.
Okay, thanks.
We should have noted also that we had a Board of Finance meeting earlier this evening with four board members, so we went a little bit more detailed. Dale took us line by line through the one hundred and sixty-seven page budget book, so...
Hundred and ninety-four.
Hundred and ninety-four, yeah.
And I should note, it's actually a very readable budget, especially if you looked at other school district budgets. This one is a great budget.
Yeah, I'll comment on that. You know, as I was reading through the deck, I had some questions. I went through the details inside the full budget book, and it was really well laid out, and a lot of good content and explanatory notes, including a lot of good explanations, reference graphs and exhibits, et cetera. So I appreciate the, you know, the work that was gone into it. I'll note that, you know, we discussed the sort of tracking, the additional revenue associated with earnings, I'm sorry, with evidence-based funding, and where that money is being deployed. About a year ago, we had, we were presented with an exhibit that showed, here's the source of the calculation, here's roughly, it's an estimate, it's imperfect, but here's roughly where U forty-six has, and I line it in by line at them, and the gaps. And I acknowledge that a number of these investments, both in terms of personnel and others, that it's well in line with the state, and the evidence suggests we should be investing. So I appreciate that.
Other questions? I, just for our audience, I wonder if Mr. Sanders, you could talk a little bit about what instructional coaches would do to help our student achievement?
Absolutely, and if you'd like, it might be worthwhile to actually have Dr. Carpenter and Dr. Schroed to come forward. We've had instructional coaches in the district in the past. This year, we're expanding a little bit, and Dr. Schroed, you want to come over and talk about the process we followed to select schools and what the role of the coaches will be this year? But essentially, for teachers and sites that are ready and willing to be, to bring in a professional coach to their building, it's really provided time within the school day for our classroom teachers to have some time to work together as a team with a professional coach around a specific area, which in this case would be math instruction. which in this case would be math instruction. So, but Dr. Schroed, you want anything else you want to add?
So about three years ago, we put together a cross-functional team of teachers, administrators at the district and the site level, and looked at the research on impact on teacher instruction and student outcomes, and put together a proposal that we brought to the Cabinet to engage in having certified teachers pull, have, be with the kids, and engage in intervention and enrichment to free up teachers, so that they had collaborative planned time to engage in professional learning communities. We engaged in that work for two years in four Title I schools using Title I satisides, and really went in already identifying what is the student outcome data and the adult outcome data that we were going to collect to see that we were successful. We based that model on a bunch of research out of the Du-4 work, the Du-4's work in professional learning communities, as well as some other continuous improvement, school improvement literature. We had some really exciting data come out of those four schools, those four Title I schools. They had much higher student growth in those four schools, and it was because, we believe, that their teachers had 70 minutes every week with their grade-level teams to be able to sit with a coach and unpack, what are kids going to know and be able to do? How are we going to know whether they learned it? What are we going to do when they don't? And, and what happens if they already know it? So these teachers got a lot of extra support with those new math common assessments, unpacking those rubrics, and talking about, in very real ways, what was required from students, and therefore, based on what they knew about students, what they needed to do in their planning to get kids ready for that work. And as I said, at the end of each of those years, we looked at the student data, but we also looked at survey data from teachers, feedback on an ongoing way from principals, and tweaked the model, and worked on the logistics to improve the model. And so we did that for two years, and then came forward with a proposal to Tony to grow that model. And he gave us that clearance. And so we've actually added eight additional schools to the model. And in those schools, again, they will get 70 minutes of time where there are certified teachers with their kids, and they're engaged in intervention and enrichment using the materials that you already approved, like ST Math, Fast Math. And so their kids will be doing hands-on, minds-on activities, which then free up the entire grade level to meet on a weekly basis. You always hear me, when I come in front of you, talk about the ongoing job embedded professional development necessary to make these really big changes in our teaching. And so we're excited, and the schools are excited, because one of the ways that we screened schools that expressed a willingness to participate was, we brought the information out to these elementary schools, and then the individual teachers in the schools voted. They were voting to say, we will meet in PLCs every week, and we will engage in an instructional coaching cycle. And when I say instructional coaching, I'm talking about the work of Jim Knight and that instructional coaching model. And so those teachers are saying, we will participate for the entire year. And I think some of the mistakes that we've made historically, not just here, but anywhere, where we hire coaches, but no one has agreed to be coached. And so we tried to be very transparent in what they were agreeing to. And we also know, and in the model designed for the fact that you can take the most amazing experienced teacher, but if you don't give them the ongoing support they need to coach, then they're not equipped with the tools that they need to help facilitate those groups. So we had a PD plan for those coaches as well, and so every Friday, they'll have time together to get their own ongoing job embedded professional development. And so we're really excited about growing the model, and I think growing it in an incremental way, instead of trying to be everything to everyone immediately.
And that's on top of some of the instructional coaches we have here that are specific to content areas such as math, science.
Absolutely.
So we still have others that we deploy out as well.
Absolutely.
And I assume we'll be tracking data, student achievement data.
Absolutely, we worked with our assessment department, and we reworked some surveys that we worked on with Hanover Research to provide that feedback from teachers as well.
Great, thank you. I also wanted to have Mr. Sanders talk a little bit more about the money we're setting aside for schools to try different things. So, let's say a school says, you know, this, this isn't quite working for our kids. I think we need to try a different approach, a different curriculum, or different, or different resources.
So again, we have to meet, ensure we meet the obligations of our contractual, you know, the contracts, especially with the teachers' union. So if it's a curriculum change, then the school would have to still go through instructional council and get approval for that change in curriculum, and come to the Board for approval of the curriculum ultimately. But really, it's, in the past, we have, we're unique as a district that we have a site exception process detailed in the teacher's contract that allows schools, individual schools, to come up with unique configurations, different rates of pay, different configurations of hours of operation, different ways of doing business. And historically, when the sites have considered such a thing, we've always said, that's fine, as long as it doesn't cost us money. And that's really difficult for a site to really implement any changes if it doesn't allow them the opportunity, flexibility in the way they configure their staff, or something different. So it's really giving license to sites to think differently, realizing that 42 elementary schools, eight middle schools, five comprehensive high schools may not need the exact same things, and they might want to do things a little bit differently. And letting administrators and teachers work together collaboratively to come up with something that looks different, and supporting them in that process. And I'm hoping that we have proposals coming up within the week. Actually, we already have one site that submitted forward one proposal, though it's for an additional coaching model that they're going to be working on this year and implementing next year. But, so it's already starting to have at least some conversation out in the field.
That's great.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm excited about that model, because I taught under that model, and it was district-wide, and the test scores just like, phew. It was very, very good. So you have it at eight schools now, right?
Eight more schools this year.
Eight more schools, okay. Thanks.
Good, anything else? Well, thank you, that great budget, as usual, Dale.
And again, if the Board has additional questions, as you perused the 190-some pages, please feel free to send them to me, and we will respond as a team to the entire Board, and publicly as well.
All right, next on the agenda are comments from the audience. No comments today? Okay. Other business, Board Member and CEO update. Any updates?
Well, I attended on April 3, Elgin Community College backpack giveaway to our community, and August 3. Oh, did I say that? And it was very exciting to be there, and John was there also as a volunteer. And I think they said they gave away 1,500 backpacks that day. And I tell you, the crowd was like around the building. I couldn't believe it, that many people, you know, that was in need of having materials for kids to start to school. And I know there's some others that's going to be in the community as well.
And I know a number of us attended summer school graduation.
Yeah, no, we did that, summer school graduation at South Elgin. It was great, it was very exciting to see these, these students who had met a barrier and knocked it down, and still graduated from high school. And some big smiles, and lightning-fast ceremony. But it was good, it was exciting. They all got their name called, and it was exciting to see.
And all the different, each school had their own.
Yep, each school, yeah. Yeah, and every school was represented. Yeah, it was an exciting afternoon.
It was also exciting to meet with the Cabinet members, many of them, to have like 45 minutes just to sit and talk, and just to get to know them on a different level. So that was very impressive, and educational for me.
Yeah, I did that as well, as the new, I think just even I did it as new Board Members. Yeah, it was very exciting, just to get to know everybody a little bit personally, too, it was nice.
So thank you.
And Hallie, you're all set for school?
For the most part, yeah, I'm really excited, especially, Shremur had had so many administrative level changes, so I'm really excited to see how our school's going to improve, because I was there during the interviews, and everyone there seemed so excited just to make a big change at the school, which is welcoming, because in the three years I've been there, it's like everything seemed so stagnant. So I think change will be good.
Any updates?
No, I think, I think that was our back-to-school readiness report. I think we're good. There are five Freedom of Information Act requests that are on the Board Doc available for the Board and public consumption. Those will also be posted on the district's website. I'm available to answer questions.
Consent agenda, longest one we've ever had, I think.
The longest in my entire tenure here. I don't know if anybody has any recollection of anything that's gone past the full alphabet, so, you ready? Am I going to be timed on this? No, it's all right. On the consent agenda, we have the personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the Board meeting, May 13, 2019, minutes of the Board meeting, June 3, 2019, minutes of the Board meeting, June 17, 2019, minutes of the Board meeting, July 15, 2019, termination of Connie Bilger, Assistant Cook, termination of Elizabeth M. Schultz, Secretary, settlement agreement in the case of Olson versus School District U-46, a contract for educational pathways for Regional Career Pathways Initiative, contract renewal for Early Learners Initiatives with One Hope United Elgin Child and Family Resource Center, contract renewal for specialized student services for occupational therapy services, contract renewal for specialized student services with Geneva Hearing Services, contract renewal with specialized student services for Read 180, Resource Systems 44, contract renewal for specialized student services, News2U, contract renewal for specialized student services, School Psychology Services, contract renewal for specialized student services with speech and language therapists, contract for curriculum instruction, instructional coaching, professional development, contract for curriculum instruction with Great Minds Professional Development, contract renewal for curriculum instruction with Math Intervention Resources, Fast Math, contract renewal, curriculum instruction, Math Intervention Resources, ST Math, contract renewal, curriculum instruction, iStation, contract renewal, secondary literacy and libraries, School Pace, American Reading Company, a contract renewal for secondary literacy and libraries for Read 180 and System 44 Professional Development, contract renewal for secondary literacy and libraries with Encyclopedia Britannica, contract renewal, secondary literacy and libraries, Renaissance Services, Star 360 Professional Development, contract renewal for teaching and learning for Turn It In, a contract proposal for curriculum instruction with professional development for Title II, proposal for secondary literacy and libraries, Mack and Maker Professional Development for Secondary Librarians and Secondary Library Professionals, a proposal from secondary literacy and libraries for Systems 44, Hooton, Mifflin, Harcourt, proposal from specialized student services, Canciones y Suentos, Instructional Resources and Professional Development, a proposal from specialized student services for Imagine Learning Resource, proposal from specialized student services for Reading Mastery and Corrective Reading Resource, a proposal from Plan Operations for Infield Mix, and finally, a change order from Plan Operations for Canton Middle School HVAC Replacement Part II, Project Number 376.
Is there any item on the consent agenda that a Board Member would like removed? All right, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Okay, discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for August 20, August 12, 2019, coming forward, if the Board has any questions, is Mr. Burnage. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $27,992,789.84.
Could I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of $27,992,789.84?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Our next item was brought forward at the last work session. It's a resolution adopting the Northern Kane County Regional Vocational System Budget for 2019-2020. Administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the resolution.
Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution for the approval of the Northern Kane County Regional Vocational System Budget for 2019-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved. Approved six zero.
And I should note, we all have to sign three copies of this? So make sure we get, we sign it before we leave.
Our final discussion action item is the purchase of property at 955-967 East Chicago Street. Coming forward to help present with this is Bruce Phelps, Assistant Senior Business Official, as well as Dr. Jeff King, Chief Operations Officer slash Deputy Superintendent of Operations. Dr. King, want to give a quick overview to the Board?
So this property is just west of 1019, which we purchased about 18 months ago, and have started work on the parking lot. We had brought this forward earlier to the Board for consideration, because after we finish with 1019, and we navigate our small bus fleet over there, and the drivers and the support staff that will need to be there, we will basically utilize the whole parking facility, which leaves us with a 90,000 to 100,000 square foot building that we really can't put anything in. So by being able to move forward with this particular property, we'll pick up between 150 and 175 parking places. If that works out to be the case, then we can venture into discussion which would be the best utilization for the building that exists at the 1019 site, and potentially keeping the building that's in the very front half of the 955. There are several buildings in the back, which we have no use for. We would demo those buildings if we were successful in purchasing the property. If the Board has any questions?
Any questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement regarding the purchase of 955-967 East Chicago Street?
So moved.
No questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Other business, CAC update. So, Mr. Sanders and I met with the two CAC co-chairs to discuss the work they'll be doing in the coming year. A lot of it was laid out in their, their reports to the Board last spring. So, but it was a good meeting, and I think we're all set to go, so. All right, other business, Mr. Sanders.
Under other business, our first item is the Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report for School Year 2019. This is an annual requirement by state law for this to be presented to the Board of Education. With that, I will hand it over to Dr. King.
As Mr. Sanders mentioned, this is an annual report. We send information to ISB. They send back the final report, who they want on it, what positions, et cetera. So what you've seen, what you have attached is the final report that we received back from ISB, which would be posted on our website.
Any questions?
And this does not require Board action, only a presentation, correct?
Correct.
And these salary and benefits don't include Appendix F work, for example, do they? Or do they?
It would be their base salary.
Their base salary, okay. Okay, thank you.
Our next is Secondary Schools' financial report for the fourth quarter, and coming forward to present that report is Dale Bridge.
Okay, before you are the Secondary Schools' financial reports on activity accounts for the fourth quarter, which is April 1 to June 30. The balances have decreased for all the schools, mostly due to the schools remitting instructional materials fees, athletic participation fees, and parking permit fees collected at the schools, and remitting those back to the district. schools and remitting those back to the district. The total balance for all high and middle schools is $2,841,490. And for the quarter, the balances have decreased by $1,366,511. And this is typical to what we see every year, usually the balances will increase the first two quarters and then decline the last two quarters. And if there's any questions, I could answer them at this time.
Are there any questions? Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is other business employee matters. And how do we want to do this?
Right, so there, I'm sorry, yes, can you hear me? So it's either the board has the option of voting to uphold the grievance, that would mean that, you know, the grievance would be granted, or the option of denying the grievance, voting to deny the grievance, that means that the grievance would be denied.
So we're going to have one motion?
One mo, you can have one motion.
So if we had a, if we have a motion to uphold the grievance, those of us in favor, or those in favor of upholding it would vote yes, and those opposed would vote?
Would vote no.
Okay.
I move to uphold the grievance and grant due to its requested relief.
Second.
Discussion comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Madam President?
Yes.
So the grievance has been upheld 5-1.
Our first item under work session is a contract renewal for Information Services with Reed 180 and Systems 44. Coming forward to present for all the work session will be Mr. Phelps, Senior Business Official for Business Services. And for this first item, it'll be Laura Macias, Director of Information Services, and Ms. Ryan, Coordinator of Secondary Literacy and Libraries. The board will recall, just a few minutes ago, on the consent agenda was, were several items related to Reed 180 and Systems 44. This is by understanding the background hosting of that service internally for U-46. With that, administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Hooton-Mifflin-Harcourt in the amount of $29,025 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Okay.
Our next is a contract renewal for Information Services with Footprints. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with BMC Software, Inc. in the amount of $28,536.21 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Our next is a contract renewal with Specialized Student Services for a Behavior Consultant. Coming forward to help with this presentation is Dr. Latrice Satterwhite, Director of Specialized Student Services. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Van Acker and Associates in the amount of $68,250 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged the IDEA Part B flow-through grant and the cost is included in the budget.
Are there any questions?
Our next is a contract renewal for Specialized Student Services for IEP and 504 software. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Embrace IEP in the amount of $51,490 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged the IDEA Part B flow-through grant and is in the budget for the school year.
Are there any questions?
Sue, just one. This is the same software we've used for the last few years?
No, it is not.
Oh, it's new?
No, it's new. Last year, we did a pilot.
Okay.
We have to change the, our online system because we've used Eastbed for about 15 years and they've gone to a new version.
Okay.
Which is totally different. So we're going to have to do training district-wide. So we were looking for a system that could support more of our district programs. So this system will support IEPs, 504 plans, which this will be the first time they will be housed electronically.
Okay.
And then also related service providers, service logs will be logged.
Okay. Is there ever any sort of parent access to any of these kinds of software?
Like an equivalent to like Infinite Campus kind of thing?
Does that make sense?
Yes, I know what you're talking about. I'll have to double-check, but I know we can send IEPs electronically.
Well, no, that, yeah, we've been able to do that, I know that, so.
But I can double-check.
Okay, it'd just be interesting to see. Thanks.
That was going to be my question also. Yeah.
We can follow up.
Any other questions? Okay.
Great. Our next is a contract renewal for Specialized Student Services for Professional Development, Diagnostics, and Applied Behavior Analysis. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Gorbold Behavioral Consulting in the amount of $75,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant and is included in the budget for the year.
Are there any questions?
Our next is a contract renewal for Specialized Student Services for Hearing Vision Supervision. Administration recommends approval of the one-year contract with Northwest Illinois Association in the amount of $70,462.32 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the education, I'm sorry, to the federal IDEA grant and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Sorry, I actually wanted to backtrack. I was signing when you got to the ABA. No, it's okay. How many, is, how many, what percentage of students are in special ed receive ABA services?
We do not provide ABA services as a district, but these individuals provide workshops and training that you would use with ABA for our staff, so they have better skills and best practices to use with our students, but we don't provide individual ABA services.
So this would be helping the teachers and staff?
It's a combination of.
Use ABA better in the classroom?
It's a combination of working with teacher, I mean, with paraprofessionals and teachers and providing them training around the ABA best practices, but not the actual ABA services to provide one-on-one. And then also, they support us with some of our most challenging students with autism, trying to strengthen their behavior plans and things like that before we look at private placement as an option.
Okay. Are there conversations that happen about some of the philosophical pieces of ABA? It's necessary appropriateness, and perhaps this is a larger question, I should, maybe I'll email this question in. I don't know, are there, does the special ed department have conversations about the appropriateness of ABA in a broader sense within the autism community?
Yes, we do. And then many parents bring their ABAs to IEP meetings.
Okay.
And then we have our VCBA, Chris Zalinski, that's at those meetings as well, and we try to incorporate some of the things that the ABA therapist is doing with the student at home. We try to incorporate it in what we can do within a school setting, but not.
What about the opposite, then? If there's a family that is, does not want ABA as a part of their child's daily life? Is that, is that accepted? Is that, how does that work?
That's fine, because we don't provide direct ABA services to any U-46 students.
Okay.
But we use just the training. I can get you more specific information.
Yeah, I think we're talking in circles around each other. Maybe some more information and then it can go from there.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
We are at the Contract Renewal for Specialized Student Services Hearing Vision Supervision, which was right into the record. Were there any questions on that one? Our next is a Contract Renewal for Business Services and Financial Operations for Microsoft Dynamics GP 2016. Coming forward to help Mr. Phelps on this one is Mr. Dale Burnage. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Unified Business Solutions in the amount of $30,066.81 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for the year.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Our next is a proposal from the Deputy Superintendent of Operations for Dale Carnegie Leadership Training. Administration recommends approval of the proposal with Dale Carnegie Training in the amount of $48,300 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for the year. For our newer board members, this would be, I believe, the third round of professional development that we've brought forward to the board to provide some additional supports for our operational team to ensure that they continually receive professional development as well.
Are there any questions? Dr. King, I know you've spoken highly of this last year. Are the same people going to the training or are we expanding it or?
So the training is differentiated from the first two. The first two rounds were the same.
Okay.
But we had so many people, we needed to do two, two different sessions because they can only hold about 25 to 30 people tops for an all-week session, which both of those were. This one will build on the previous two.
Okay.
So we are selecting people, basically the first layer down, and we're starting with those, and we'll see what kind of reception we get. The responses were really, really positive from the two we provided previously, so I don't expect this to go poorly. I think it should go quite well. So my guess is we will probably add another one, but we'll come back to you if we, if we decide to do that.
Okay.
So we can incorporate more people.
Okay.
Because again, we're limited. It's 25 is what they prefer as a cap. We try to squeeze in 30 so we can get more people exposed.
And do we suggest what we'd like to have to focus on? I know that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we've had that. We actually had those conversations months ago. We just had delayed this because we didn't want to do it over the summer because so many people are busy or and/or gone. August is not a good month to do it, so by getting this approved at the next meeting, then we're going to initiate mid to late September, probably do them late September, early October.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Our next is a proposal from Curriculum Instruction for Elementary Library Technology Purchase. Coming forward to help Mr. Phelps on this one is Dr. Schrod and Ms. Macias and Celia Banks, our Coordinator of Elementary Literacy and Libraries. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Dale EMC and Pace Systems in the amount of $67,500 for the interactive boards and $36,750 for the interactive board stands, respectively, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Our next is a bid from Career and Technical Education for 11 Mig Welders for Elgin High School. Coming forward to help present is Kanasha Brown, Director of Educational Pathways, and Tracy Stewart, Coordinator of CTE. Administration recommends award of the low bid meeting specification to Wisco in the amount of $26,290 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Carl D. Perkins Grant and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? I was impressed that we had increased the number of students in the welding program from 45 to 150. Now, some of these are from outside our district, like District 300?
Yes, that's part of the Regional Career Pathways Program. We're starting to see an increase in the number of students that are interested in our welding program.
But the ones that, from our own district come from all five high schools?
Yes.
Great. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, and the two most controversial subjects of the night are two change orders. Mr. Phelps, I hope you're ready for the tough questions.
Sure.
So the first one, Sheila Downs coming for the, it doesn't matter.
Just me.
You can handle all these. It's a change order for Plan Operations for Lockdown Hardware Phase Four, Project Number 2048. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve a change order with Anderson Lock Company in the amount of minus $31,988.40, and this credit will be applied to the District Safety Fund.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Our next is a change order from Information Services for Wireless Access Point Project Number 2031. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve the change order with Peak Electric in the amount of $13,380, and the credit will be applied to the educational fund. And Laura's here, if you want to ask her some really tough questions about that. How much cable is that?
Lot.
A lot, okay.
Any questions? Good, thank you. And since that is the last item on the agenda, I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Donna. Mrs. Smith?
Yes. I just messed up my screen, somebody's got to fix it. Oh. Yes, I do.